Good evening. Welcome to the August 22 West Milford Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. Please stand for the flag salute. Behind us.
............................................................
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, The Herald News, The Suburban Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, Cablevision of Warwick, and the West Milford TV 77. Also posted in the administration building, copies of the Board meeting agenda calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Roll call, Ms. Francisco?
Mrs. Ricano.
Here.
Mr. Seidowitz. Mr. Lippi.
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Guarino. Mrs. O'Brien. Mrs. Lockwood.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Here.
Mrs. Romeo.
Here. First, we will have Dr. Fenari's superintendent report.
Thank you, Mrs. Romeo. We've been extremely busy this summer, working to prepare for the new school year. Parents and families should have received a letter from me dated August 18 that described some of the innovations and initiatives that we were engaged in. In case you missed our message, the parent portal opened yesterday. This is where you will find important information about your child's class placement, along with other forms to be filled out, including the school lunch application and acceptable use policy. I want to thank Mr. Novak and the team of teachers who engaged in curriculum work, as well as elementary math teachers who collaborated to identify the new Eureka Squared Math Series for grades K through 5. Thank you also to those staff and administrators who implemented our summer programs, including the STEM Camp, the Summer Reading Program, and the ESY Program, which was overseen by Dr. Reza and his team. All of our teachers and administrators and support staff members did a tremendous amount of work to prepare for the new school year. Whether it was their preparation and professional learning opportunities, preparation for instruction, organizing our school resources, placing students, or preparing our facilities, our schools were active and productive this summer. The transformation of Westbrook School to house Highlander Academy, Highlander Prep, and the Learning Unlimited Program took a monumental effort. Thank you to Mrs. Francisco, Mr. Kelly, and the operations staff who worked to make physical changes to the building, and to the summer operations interns who helped as well. As I said at the July meeting, I want to thank Mrs. Romeo, Mrs. Lockwood, and the entire board for allowing me to join the West Milford Township Public Schools family. I'm truly looking forward to working with you in support of our students as they learn and grow. Next, I'd like to introduce the draft district goals for the 2023-2024 school year. The district administrative team and I met this month to ensure that the goals truly reflect this year's priorities. These goals, once approved, will become part of our school goals and individual administrator and teacher goals. The district goals are also aligned with the district's strategic plan, which I will present as updates to the board at future Board of Education meetings. Each of the draft district goals is written as a SMART goal, meaning that they are specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound. As these are annual goals, the expectation is that they will be achieved and/or have significant progress made by the end of the 23-24 school year. District Goal Number One, proposed: Continue our initiative to enhance the district math program in order to provide students with the skills necessary to prepare for future success as measured by the planning and implementation of a rigorous, standards-based curriculum, supported by the allocation of resources, use of formative assessments, and continued professional development. District Goal Number Two, proposed: Stabilize district finances in light of the challenges of S2 reductions in state aid and declining enrollment, as measured by the identification of cost-effective solutions and potential means of revenue generation. District Goal Number Three, proposed: Continue to foster a culture that supports the mental and physical well-being of our students and staff, as measured by the identification and implementation of appropriate resources, professional development, and communication about available supports. And finally, District Goal Number Four, proposed: Increase a sense of unity across all schools in the district, as measured by the implementation of revised communication and branding strategies, and appropriate consistency of program implementation. Members of the board, please let me know if you have questions about any of the draft goals, or if you would like to discuss their content. It is our intention to place the final version of the district goals on the September agenda for your approval. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fenari. Next up is Mr. Novak with the Director of Education Report.
Thank you, Mrs. Romeo. I would like to begin with an update on some of our summer curriculum work. Dr. Fenari mentioned it in her opening remarks. The work on the Eureka Math Squared Program, the replacement for our K-5 program, was probably one of the more exciting processes I've been involved with in my time as Director of Ed. Although it's a K-5 program that we are putting into place and purchased and are moving forward on, this was a great process for K-12, to take a look at our math process, hear from our staff members, engage with some tremendous professional development, and really move the district forward. So I think our families are going to see tremendous change in many of the things that we do in mathematics this year. One of the things that we spoke about today is looking forward to our September 19 board meeting. I'm going to do a more in-depth presentation on our K-5 program implementation, as well as talk about some of the revisions and discussions we had over the summer for Algebra I, Geometry Algebra II, as they pertain to our middle school and high school students. So, you know, your approval on the Eureka Math curriculum is on the agenda for tonight. Along with that, we also have a number of new courses at the middle school. We are implementing a semester course for character education, grade 6 through 7th grade. This was a course proposed in conjunction with our middle school staff, their character education committee, along with Mrs. Reinhold, the interim principal at that time. We found after the return to "normal" school hours after the pandemic that our students had, you know, met some challenges in online learning, virtual and hybrid learning, that sort of thing. So, one of the goals of this course, as presented in the curriculum, is to, you know, get back to interaction, team building, a lot of the things that we've had in our project adventure courses over the years, but this is a more dedicated approach to that process, and it's available for 6th through 7th graders in a semester, half-year course. Also, at the Macabre School, we had a process last year for inclusion of some special education programs into our percussion ensemble. If you were at our all-district performances and some of our performances last year, you really, you know, many people moved to tears with the success of a lot of the inclusion programs we implemented last year. This process for creating a unified, specific percussion ensemble takes that to the next level. So, that's on the agenda for approval tonight. And then, last but not least, is along the same lines of an inclusive nature, as we're sitting now in the new Highlander Academy, Highlander Prep building, the Journalism and Modern Media Course that has been in our high school for many years, has been revised and adjusted to meet the needs of the students here at the Highlander Academy. So, a couple of very exciting projects over the summer. The next thing I want to talk about is another exciting development. Take a little sip. I had the privilege of attending a meeting of the Highlander Education Foundation, sorry, Highlander Funding Committee, which led to some discussions about the potential rebirth of a education foundation here in West Milford. So it was a very exciting night. Dr. Goff and Mrs. Stevenson prepared a presentation for the community that was, you know, very, very engaging, very positive, probably 20 to 30 members in attendance. I think they walked away with some success, with people signing up for executive board positions in the education foundation. So I just wanted to, you know, provide an opportunity for Mrs. Stevenson to come and speak about the Ed Foundation and the committee, without having to wait for the second public comment. So, thank you for being here tonight and for, you know, for the process.
Thank you, Dr. No-- Miss-- I just gave you a doctorate. Thank you, Mr. Novak. Dr. Goff could not be here tonight, but she is watching live, so I hope I do her very well by presenting to all of you tonight. We are in the throes of really establishing a wonderful, positive committee for our community of West Milford, as well as with all of you. I know that you are aware where this came from. We are really suffering from state funding loss and cuts, and we are trying to turn that into the positive. And one of the best ways to do that is by gaining the community's support and making a real valiant effort. The branches, as you have all seen, there are four different branches. Mr. Novak spoke about the Educational Foundation. We plan-- we have an executive board already set. Dr. Goff and I will be co-presidents. Lisa Johnson will be our vice president. Our secretary will be Christina Duffy, and our treasurer is Amy Lewis. So we have some real wonderful people on board with us that have already established their names in the community with their work, and we are excited to get that off the ground. We hope to do some donated donates to get a little bit of a pocket stash, to first get our 501(c)(3) established. From there, we hope to do two or three fundraisers a year, and we will not be stepping on any PTA, PTSO, PTOs, HSAs, TOs. We hope to very much work in conjunction with them, so that this turns into a really well-established foundation. With that being said, the Education Foundation will operate a little differently than some of the other ones that you may have heard of. We hope to take all of the money that we fundraise and give it directly back to the Board of Ed, so that the bigger programs can be saved. Things that we've talked about are the STEM Camp that everyone has loved in the district, as well as maybe refurbishing Chromebooks, so that that money can be regenerated into something else. Another branch of the Highlander Funding Committee is writing to legislators about the S2, as well as the F33 formula, which is that sending and receiving that we've talked about a lot, specifically with our PCTI. So, we hope to start with a flood of emails. It's a really easy thing to do, to just send an email to a bunch of different senators, and then we hope to have a committee that will call and say, Senator so-and-so, this is so-and-so from West Milford, and they will know us by name once they are flooded with those emails. We hope to meet with those senators. We hope to get them to pass bills, as some of the senators in South Jersey have already started to stop S2 funding and to reform it. From there, another branch that we're doing is collaborating with grant writing. We already heard Mr. Lippi speak about the Electronic Bus Grant. We've investigated that. We've investigated other grants that are provided by New Jersey State, as well as the federal government. We are really anxious to work with all of you in helping to write grants. There's a lot that goes into grant writing, such as doing research, just the actual writing of it. We can be a partner with you to get that done. We are really excited to hear that Mr. Novak has already started investigating our qualifications for the High Impact Tutoring Grant, available for 3rd and 4th grades in New Jersey. But we hope to just find more and send them your way, and to provide the research, and to give you whatever you may need to get the bigger grants into our school district and then into our budget. The last branch is the social media branch. I don't know if you've heard of this thing called TikTok, but it's a pretty big deal. And there are little businesses that have just taken off with TikTok, and we're hopeful that we can have a committee of adults and kids making TikToks to get our message across and to get into the news in a positive light. West Milford did this. They raised this much money. They wrote to senators. They have a meeting. We want to see you there. Whatever the need may be, we hope to get the message out with social media. So we have a very big umbrella, which is the Highlander Funding Committee, lots of branches underneath it, and we hope that each and every one of you is a part of it with us. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And your next meeting was October 4?
October 4.
All right.
October 4.
Where we're at?
Same high school cafeteria. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Stevenson. That concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. Ms. Francisco, special reports and correspondence?
Yes, we have the minutes from the July 18 workshop regular meeting and the executive session for your consideration. I'd make a motion to approve the following Board of Education minutes from July 18 workshop and July 18 executive session.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. My president's report, I feel like everything I had in my president's report's been said already, but I wanted to note that members of the board have told me about the Highlander Academy, and how amazing it looks, and how exciting it is, you know, with our new space. I want to thank Mr. Kelly and all of our custodial and maintenance staff for their hard work this summer. Time is ticking. First day of school will be here before we know it, and it's very exciting. Also, remember, if there is a problem with your schedule, reach out to your student's counselor or the school guidance department. Board members cannot help you with that. You have to go to your child's school counselor or case manager. I also was going to talk about the Highlander Funding Committee meeting. It really was very refreshing to see almost 30 people in the community come together to talk about how to work together for our education system and for our students. It really was nice to see the positivity, the excitement, and all of the ways that you could be involved. So, some people are never going to make a TikTok, right? Some people are never going to write a letter, but the cool thing is, they already wrote the letter. So all you have to do is send an email, you know? My 92-year-old grandmother, who lives in town, is worried about our kids' education. She's not going to email a letter, but she will call her neighbors and tell them about this, you know? So it is something to talk about. Everyone can be involved, because I think our senior citizen community, and I say that because they have just as much to care about this as the new parents that live in town, you know? Because the more we all work together, the more we will have, and the better it will be for all community members. So this is exciting. I would like to ask Mrs. Stevenson, where could someone find your presentation from the last meeting?
They can email us, and we'll happily send it.
Okay. And your email is Courtney Stevenson?
Highlander Funding Committee email, just that.
Highlander Funding Committee at gmail.com, and you could get this presentation emailed to you. In it, I'm not going to go over it, but in it is a lot of ways that you could be involved, and I think that's great. So thank you to everyone that was at the meeting and the excitement of this. And so, next is public comment.
Before that?
Oh, yes, Karen.
Courtney, would you give us that email again?
Highlander Funding Committee at gmail.
Oh, okay. I feel this is not what we want now.
Also, at the October 4 meeting, we will hand more out.
Good. Thank you.
And I could attach a PDF to the advertisement for the October 4 meeting.
Wonderful.
Let me send out the school messenger, so.
Thank you. Public comment. All speakers will have five minutes to speak until a period of 30 minutes transpires. Before speaking, please state your name, group affiliation, and address for the record. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. After speaking, all speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, group affiliation, and their address. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are expected to have read the statement within the agenda regarding the regulations concerning public comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Do we have anyone that would like to speak?
My name is Courtney Stevenson, 307 Ridge Road, West Milford, New Jersey. As you have already heard tonight, the Highlander Funding Committee's goal is to assist our school district in the potential reduction of state funding by uniting the community and guarding support for the district. We are staying positive in the light that we can help and support the board's work. However, we are also very transparent with our followers on our Facebook page, which you can also find, about the truth that state funding has forced budget cuts and will continue to do so. In that respect, I would like to speak as a mother, educator, and one of the co-leaders of the Highlander Funding Committee regarding the class size policy. Revisions were done by adding a column called Number of Students Desired, and perhaps that is good enough. However, these numbers are still too high for children to learn best in the best environment possible and for teachers to teach effectively. According to the revised policy, the number desired for the K-3 range is 20 to 23 students, with a max of 25. This is too many children in our primary grades. I am also concerned and would like to point out that students in grades 4 through 6 were grouped together. Our 6th graders are now in the middle school, where class sizes and needs are very different than the elementary level. 4th graders especially should be looked at with great care. The NJSLA scores directly impact our school district ratings in U.S. News and World Reports, as well as Niche.com. This grade should not have a max of 28 children. You are looking for test scores to increase, as many of you have mentioned in previous meetings. There are plenty of studies and lots of research stating how smaller class sizes are better for everyone involved. You know this. But this is my children's school, and their teachers, and their friends, and their community. This instruction decision will directly relate to how students perform on standardized tests. Therefore, this policy is a major concern for me. With limited support in our schools, like guidance counselors and math coaches, you are leaving teachers on their own islands. You are guaranteeing them to get more sick physically and mentally. Teachers will burn out, and our students will not receive the quality education we have come to expect in West Milford. Today, teaching is very different than it was only five or 10 years ago. Teachers are dealing with children who are anxious, depressed, worried, scared, quiet, and really loud, and rambunctious, and excited. And these are the regular kids, the ones with grounded, solid families. Teachers are also seeing an increase of students with unstable family lives. They are coming into our classrooms with loads on their backs. Teachers have students who see school and the classroom as a safe haven, but with so many students in one class, those students who need their teacher to notice them will get lost. There is also a huge influx of students needing special education support, and teachers are unable to provide this support alone. With huge class sizes, they cannot differentiate their instruction and provide challenge work for the gifted students, as well as scaffolded instruction for the special needs children. Teachers are expected to provide a safe and comfortable environment while simultaneously teaching a very rigorous New Jersey curriculum. However, they are not superheroes, and this policy is expecting them to be. On the contrary to everything I just said, I get it. I have felt the heat before, as I have sat in your seat. I know what it's like to hear things that need to be cut. It is with truth that I ask each and every single one of you to collaborate with the Highlander Funding Committee, to band this community, our community, together to stop this. Those of you who have reached out and attended our meetings, we are grateful of your support. We need every one of you on board with our efforts. When a community works together, good can only happen. And you, as board trustees, are a major part of that community. We look forward to working with all nine of you to inspire change within West Milford, so all of our policies are positive ones.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevenson. Is there another person that would like to, another public comment?
Move to close public comments.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Fenari, is the agenda that we received as presented, or do you have any changes?
There are a couple of things we need to-- we're going to-- there you go. There are a few adjustments. Board members, if you move to page six of your agenda, motion number two under personnel is pulled. Continuing on, we have a change in personnel motion number 31. I won't use staff names, but I will use initials, so the ninth individual in item 31, initial C-S, is removed. And finally, personnel motion number 46, same procedure, staff member M-M, the fourth individual on that motion, the dollar amount rather than $1,500 should be $250. That's, I'm so sorry, that's on page 16. We have a lot of personnel motions tonight. And those are all the changes I have.
Move to approve the agenda as amended and presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We're going to move on to education. Mrs. Lockwood.
I make a motion to approve agenda items 1 through 9 under education.
Second.
Second. Third. Fourth.
Any questions or comments about 1 through 9 in education? Mrs. Dwyer.
I do. 1 through 9, oh, sorry, 1 through 9. Is this the, this isn't the Fair-- yeah, the Fairview trip. Do we have chaperones yet for that?
I think the school is still working on that.
Okay. Okay. I thought, I thought we were supposed to get a list of chaperones when the trip came up for approval. And I just want to make sure we have enough female chaperones and male chaperones.
Yeah, we'll have two committee meetings before that field trip, so that's something we can discuss in education at the next committee meeting. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing as non-roll call, please, Ms. Francisco.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Ricano.
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Mr. Lippi.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes. We're going to go to personnel. Mrs. Van Dyke.
I'd like to move items 1, then 3 through 50 with the amendments.
Any questions or comments for staff? Okay, any questions or comments for Personnel? Seeing as non-roll call.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Lippi.
Yes.
Mrs. Ricano.
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
I abstain number 5 and yes on everything else.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Operations and Finance, Mrs. Ricano.
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to move Items 1 through 7 under Operations and Finance.
Second.
Questions and comments on 1 through 7? Roll call, please.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
I have a question real quick.
Go ahead.
Sorry, on 7, is that, does that include the New Jersey School Board's reimbursement?
I thought we...
For the board members?
I thought we already approved that.
We did already approve that.
Yeah, because when you have that, is, we have the grid, and you have to vote for...
Yourself.
You're abstaining on yourself, and you vote yes for everyone else.
I just saw that it was on the documents. That's the only reason I asked again, under the, under the board documents.
Yeah, it's no, the board has already been approved for that.
And that's what I figured. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Where was I, Mr.? Let's start this way. Mr., Mrs. Ricano.
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Lippi.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
I would like to move Item Number 8 under Operations and Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Mrs. Ricano.
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Lippi.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
I abstain.
Mrs. Romeo.
I abstain.
And I would like to move Items Number 9 through 13 under Operations and Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Mrs. Ricano.
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
So, Mr. Lippi.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz, policy.
I move to waive the first reading of the new policy entitled Sick Leave Code 1642.01 and the new regulation entitled Sick Leave Code 1642.01.
Second.
Questions and comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Lippi.
Yes.
Mr., Mrs. Ricano.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
I'd like to move Items 1 through 9 under policy. Don't all speak at once.
Second.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Questions and comments, 1 through 9? Go ahead, Mr. Seidowitz.
Regarding the class size policy, I think that it's an unfortunate and uncomfortable reality that we have to face in order to give our administration the tools that it needs to move forward in our fiscal realities, so obviously, nobody wants that. We truly do want smaller class sizes, but I do feel that the upcoming years are going to be difficult, and not passing this policy will make it more difficult for our administration to help us move forward.
When I read through the policy, I was very concerned about kindergarten through 3rd grade. Desired number 25, I have a problem with that, but a maximum of 28. These children are in formidable years, and this is where a lot of problems academically, emotionally, start to surface. And if the teachers don't have that small class size and they can't focus on those little ones, I just think some of these kids are going to get lost, and I don't want to see that. This is not education that was, or class sizes as we had. When I went to elementary school, I had 17 in my class. Went to a Catholic school, need I say more? But as times have changed, technology has changed, parents are working, they're not there for their kids. The teachers become responsible for these little ones, and I really think that a maximum of 28 should be looked at seriously. I even think a desired number of 25 is too high. So I'll be voting no. I'm sorry.
Peter.
I'll step out on the line here and say I agree with both of you.
Mike.
Microphone.
Microphone, sorry. Not used to needing a microphone. The, like I said before, I agree with both of you on this case, but my question is, being a non-educator here, there has to be studies, there has to be something out there that'll tell us what the sweet spot is. We hear a lot of numbers here saying it's too much, it's not enough, we have money issues, we have childcare issues, we have all that. I think I'm going to vote to pass it tonight to get it moving, but I think we need to set ourselves up so we can review this again somewhere not too far down the road and look at it and figure out what the new numbers are. I'm sure there were pre-COVID numbers back in the Stone Age. When I went to school, the numbers were 30 or 40, or whatever the numbers were. Today, they may be making numbers up here, 3, 4, 5, whatever it is. So whatever those numbers are, we should, instead of sitting here saying 25, 28, 26, 22, 21, what is the number? That's the law I'm asking for.
Thank you.
I, I'd like you to agree with both of them. But I do understand that we have to have some type of policy. One thing that does remain is that it says desired or guidelines, and the board can always overrule those desired numbers or those guidelines. And that's kind of how it's been probably through all the years. There has always been a guideline, but not set in stone type of policy. And we've looked at the makeup of the classes too, so that we know that maybe this will work, but maybe, you know, it won't, maybe 17 will work here, or 25, but it won't work for that class. So I, I think we have to have a policy. I don't disagree with anybody because we want to do the best we can for each student, but we do have to have some type of policy. And I don't think it's unheard of for us to look at something again down the road if we see that this is creating, you know, a problem for us educationally. So I will, I'm going to support the policy, but I totally agree with both sides of it.
Dr. Penari, is there any other questions from a board member?
Okay, so I just want to make sure everybody understands that the frame in this policy is to give us a guideline, as Mrs. Van Dyke just said. And to answer you, Mr. Lippi, there were numbers and still exists for districts of high poverty where we were required, in the state of New Jersey, to have no more than 21 students in a kindergarten class, no more than 23 in grades 1 through 3, and grades 4 and 5, 24. So those numbers still exist for districts of high poverty. For all other school districts, we use that as a benchmark, but obviously, it's not etched in stone. In some districts, we have very small class sizes because there are fewer children. In larger districts, sometimes those numbers are more challenging. So I can tell you right now, though, based on the numbers in our enrollment currently, as of today, there are no classes that reach 28 students at any grade in the elementary level. So please know that while that number 28 looks like a very scary number, it's not meant to be, let's make classes of 28. That's, that's art. We're not going past this, right? And sometimes we have challenges with space. Sometimes we have challenges with staffing. But right now, we're in good shape. And I want you to know that there are classes that also, in a few cases, are falling below the minimum number that's in this policy because the enrollment is not there at those grade levels. So this policy is intended to give us a guide, but it is not intended to indicate that we in any way, shape, or form think that 28 students in a class in kindergarten is a good idea.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Lippi.
Yes.
Mrs. Ricano.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
I'm going to abstain because I really want to see this revisited.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Hang on. We just voted on 1 through 9. Yeah, so Terry, you abstained on all of them?
Oh, no, just Number 7.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's okay. Mrs. Lockwood, negotiations, please.
I make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 1 under negotiations.
Second.
Questions and comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Lippi.
Yes.
Mrs. Ricano.
Yes.
Mr. Green, oh, Mr. Green is not here. Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Parks and Rec.
We have not had a meeting.
Safety.
No meeting.
Superintendent's Roundtable.
We, our first meeting of the new school year is on September 21st. So I'll have a report after that.
Thank you. Passaic County School Boards.
No meetings over the summer. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, 26, the 26th of September, 6:00 to 8:30 at the Barnyard Carriage House in Totoa.
Thank you. New Jersey School Boards.
So on Saturday, September 23rd, at the New Jersey School Board Association Trenton Headquarters, and virtually being held, mandated training day for governance 1 through 4 will be offered. So if you, even for first-term members with first year, working towards their first year, you're able to take Governance 2 and 3. This is a good opportunity to do it, an easier opportunity to do it because it is on a Saturday, so I recommend it. On Monday, October 23rd through Thursday, October 26th, is the New Jersey School Board Association Workshop. I recommend if you can attend even one day in person, that that would be a great opportunity to network with people from around the state and learn from them what their issues are and what we all have in common. So, and also to get many more trainings done in a short period of time. Other items for the New Jersey School Board Association, because we do have negotiations that are coming up, that if, based on our dues, paid services, we can have our contracts looked at by their professionals. They call it a Teacher Contract Wellness Check, and I could send the board the information that goes along with that. There's also a Teacher Salary Guide Wellness Check, where they give an overview and an opinion on our salary guide. And then there's paid services, which I'm sure that's a little less tasteful for the board, but they have Salary Guide Development Services if need be. But being that we do have newer members and we are going into negotiations, it's something that may be worth hearing another opinion before going into those negotiations as to where our contracts are in their professional opinions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lippi, legislative. Okay, and Technology Oversight. Okay. We also have not had a township meeting. Municipal Alliance.
The Municipal Alliance met on the 7th. The one thing that came up that's coming recent, in the future, is going to be the Family Wellness Festival, which is going to be held at McApin, and that's September 23rd, and I think we might have a table there with our administrators?
Yes, we're working on making sure that we do have a table. Dr. Resa and I are kind of taking point on that, and we'll give the board more information as soon as we have it.
Great, and that, because the alliance works hand-in-hand with our school district with the many programs. So that is wonderful that we're going to do something like that. And that's what, our next meeting, I believe, is October 4th or something, I'm not sure, but that's coming up.
Thank you. And CPAC, Mrs. Lockwood.
The first meeting has been scheduled for September 26th at 7:00 PM at Maple Road.
Okay, we're going to move on to Old Business. Does anyone have any old business? Mr. Seidowitz.
So I know that we have previously sent several letters to the Passaic County Commissioners regarding, excuse me, in regards to the Passaic County Technical Institute's funding formula. I don't know much about it, honestly, and I think that it would behoove us, if any of us knows a direction as to the governance of Passaic County and how they would come up with the formula, because hearing that all 21 counties have their own formula, kind of shocking. I figured it would be a state model versus a county-by-county model. So if anybody knows anything more, maybe we could share that before the next step comes of actually showing up to their meeting. So that's it for that one. I have a second thing, unless anybody wants to comment on that.
I do. I think there is a formula that the Passaic County uses, but the commissioners put in a minimal amount. I think it's like 20%, and the districts put in 80% of, of the funding for PCTI. But I'm not sure, but I think that's it. Am I right, Tim?
No.
No. What is the, what percentage?
Well, we, last year, we met with other districts, and we went over this. It's the budget that the county has for Passaic County School for PCTI has never changed. Am I correct? It's like $7 million, and it's been that way probably for the last 20 years. And it really is up to the commissioners to set that, that funding.
But I thought it was the districts that pay the board for it.
Well, they do, but it's really set by, by your Passaic County Commissioners. Also, they used to, they used to be fee holders. That's the case.
Their meetings are not very well advertised. And they're usually on a morning at like 9:00 AM or...
Yeah, the advertising usually comes out like the night before. It's a very different way of...
I think, I don't know much about Passaic County Tech operations and their budget. I know that their tuitions are their revenue source. So they do get state funding, but I know that when they, when they receive their state funding, they also have been adjusting their tuition. So they've pretty much in a holding pattern as far as, I think it actually went down this year when they finally finalized their budget. That, we didn't see the increase that we've been seeing in the past. But I think they've recognized the fact that they have more students now than they had before, which, you know, helps offset some of their costs because the more students you have in your class, the lower, the lower is your per pupil cost.
Do they get state aid this week?
Yes, they do. They get, they get a substantial amount of state aid because the governor feels strongly about funding technical education. And unfortunately, a lot of the high schools have had to reduce their, their old shop and technical educational programs because they're costly to maintain. West Milford is one of the few districts that have been able to maintain their, their wood shop and their mechanical drawing and things like that. And they've, they've revised the curriculums, right, Dan, through the years to adjust for technology. And now we're doing STEM. They've changed the requirements for certification for staff members. But I know that we're trying desperately to keep up with everything, and we have some really good programs here. We have culinary arts. We have so many of the things that, you know, PCTI has been able to offer. But some, you know, people just prefer to go to that institution. But yes, they do get a lot of funding from the state.
I thought, I thought there was a formula that was talked about in the school board.
I don't remember, I honestly, in the meetings that we had, I don't remember a formula being put out there. The only thing that... The only thing that was mentioned during those meetings was that the budget for PCTI from the county has not changed in at least 15 years. So, like Barbara said, I'm sure they have to make up their costs wherever that amount, and it's not a big amount, where other counties maybe foot the full bill for the schools because they're not as big. It really, it really depends on county. And that surprised me, too, that there isn't like a set rate that each county has to have. But I guess it goes by the amount of population and, you know, how many kids are in the schools? I don't know. But that, there was like a committee that got together through New Jersey School Boards. And myself and Debbie O'Brien went, well, we went three times. But then the committee kind of fizzled out because.
So I'm going to ask the two people on Passaic County School Boards, is Mrs. Van Dyke and Mrs. Lockwood, correct? Is there someone that you, that runs that? Is there like a president of the PCTI, like the Passaic County School Boards that you could email and ask them to send us any information? Any meeting notes from the past that they would have? And then that way, we could have factual information that was provided in a meeting? Would that be okay?
I can reach out to Jeff again. And Debbie may, Debbie may have the information that came from that meeting. I don't, I don't have it in my head offhand. But there's a gentleman named Jeff who's been probably a school board member for 35 years.
Okay.
And you know who I'm talking about? And he, he has been a big, he's been behind pushing. He's part of, not, you know, North Heldon.
Mr. Fisher.
Manchester, yes.
Yeah.
He's up.
Wonderful. And then, the next thing is, I'm going to just ask them if we could put that as a topic on Operations and Finance for September, please. So anything that anyone gets, if you could forward it to Mrs. Francisco, Dr. Fenaria, and myself, and then we will have it for the next committee meeting.
Thank you.
You have one other thing?
I do.
With the Academic Success Committee, I almost couldn't say that. Is there a potential of a Part Two to that for this school year? Just as a follow-up to, to the findings and any quantifiable measures that could come from that? Doesn't have to be answered tonight, I'm just curious.
I'm going to stop you there. We requested in the spring that they come to a committee meeting. Do you remember that? And that didn't happen yet. So thank you for bringing it up in old business. Because the next step was that we were going to have them come to a committee meeting. But then, we got a new superintendent, and it didn't happen yet. So that is also for, hopefully, this September, possibly October, Agenda for Education. Right? And then, so in committee, we would discuss that presentation, discuss, you know, and then if we saw after committee that we wanted another presentation, we would, we would talk about it there.
Right. I just think that it started out on a good footing and that in New Jersey School Boards Association, one of the big things that they talk about is the Lighthouse Study, where boards that focus on education have better educational results. And I think that if we just keep hammering that as a board within cooperation with the administration, I think that we can continue on a good stride. Thank you.
I want to comment. I absolutely agree. And I appreciate that you brought that up again. I do think that there were some, let's say, some untied laces from the spring of some things that we said that we would revisit that we need to just close up and work on. And that is definitely one of them. And we will be very busy in the next couple months. Okay? Does anyone have anything else under old business? Go ahead, Mrs. Dwyer.
What are the plans to reach out to the Township Council regarding Hillcrest? If this has been directed.
So we've been, we've, we're in communication with them. Barbara, if she did not, go ahead.
We did send out an RFP for the feasibility study. We do have some proposals. Mrs. Sinandre and I have emailed back and forth. What I am going to do is provide him with a copy of the proposals that we received. And our committee has to get together to review the proposals also, and then come together to determine how you're going to award the RFP. So the members of the committee will have to come up with a time where we can meet on the short term. Because we have to decide within 60 days, and it's been about three weeks. And there's been a lot going on at the township and here. So we have to make that decision.
Thank you, Mrs. Dwyer. Yeah, and that is in the notes from Operations and Finance here on the second page. Any other old business? Mrs. Lockwood.
I'm not sure if this is considered old business, but I guess it's the best place to say it. I just wanted to thank Mrs. Francisco for stepping in last month and volunteering to step in and be our acting superintendent to keep us in compliance with the county. Not only did you step in and take over a very busy month while still doing your regular job, you also didn't want any compensation for your additional duties. Thank you.
Yeah, Barbara, thanks.
Thank you. I need a motion.
Move to close old business.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any new business? Go ahead, Mr. Seidowitz.
It's something I thought on the way here. It's not necessarily business that we're going to bring to the table and vote on eventually. It's more along lines of if the board can get a schedule of the standardized testing that we're going to see in this upcoming school year. I think that that would help us to kind of gear ourselves to what to expect and how we, how we essentially quantify success. Right or wrong is just how it is. Nature of the beast. But if.
I believe you have it.
Yeah.
I'll reshare it.
Sorry.
It's a busy month.
Just for clarification, every year, the Department of Education requires all school districts to post to the public their testing calendar. So we certainly have that set and we'll be able to reshare with you.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other new business?
I move to close new business.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We are at our second public comment of the night. All speakers will have five minutes to speak until a period of 30 minutes transpires. Before speaking, please state your name, group affiliation, and address for the record. Members of the public who've requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. After speaking, all speakers are asked to sign the register provided get their name, group affiliation, and their address. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are expected to have read the statement within the agenda regarding the regulations concerning public comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Do we have anyone that would like to speak? The stuffy.
Is it red?
Red, sorry. Have it.
Red is on.
Here.
Okay. Christina Duffy, 25, Warwick Turnpike in Hewitt. I have a middle schooler, Lord help me, and a Marshall Hill student. So it's less comment and more open question to you. So you've passed this policy relative to class size. And my question back to you, kind of what you were speaking to, Linda, when do you revisit? And how do you revisit? Are you doing proactive revisit? Or are you doing reactive revisit? And I guess along the same lines, should you be in a position where these policy limits are stretched? I.e., you have to close another school and we do, we do have to like move into these bigger class sizes? How do you measure efficacy? And at what period is that measured? My total concern here is not so much short-term, which there will be short-term impact. We're going to see it right away. It's more long-term. It's like these kids, four, five, six years down the line who didn't get caught in K, in ONE, or whatever, now what are we doing? Now what are we seeing? How much, how much do we have to, you know, give forth to help them get to where they need to be? That's really my concern. And I'll give you anecdotal evidence. And it's not related to huge class size. My youngest is dyslexic, right? In kindergarten, and I would imagine, maybe in first grade? I think in kindergarten, she was screened, right? Blew the screen. My very dyslexic child blew the screen and flew under the radar for a while. So if that happens to my kid in a smaller classroom, what happens to the other kids in the bigger classroom? And it's not just the learning, the reading disabilities. It's your ADHDs. It's whatever else is going on for these kids. So that's really where my head is at with this. And I just ask you, as you're considering these policies, please put some criteria in for yourselves to help kind of manage and rein that in. So that's it.
We need like a set of a jar up here.
Yeah.
Mrs. Fredericks. Good, how are you?
This might be a little.
State your name and your address. Your group affiliation.
We have more time.
That's okay.
Hey, it's Joan Marie Fredericks. 38 West Shore Road, West Milford. Retired school bus driver. I know you is, all you is, some of you is, drove some of you is. But right now, I come before you for a request. Right now, I am working on the class of 73, 50th class reunion. Okay? And we had a meeting today and my committee members, some of them you might know. I have Celeste Peterson App, Ramona Van Donk Platt, Pete Anzalone, Steve DeGeorges, and Debbie Korzac, and myself. The six of us. We were speaking today at the meeting and we want to get the approval from everybody first. We'd like to plant a tree in memory of the students' class mayday we lost. We lost 38 people out of our class. We would like to plant a tree at McApit. That's where we graduated from. And we also would like to put a plaque in memory of them. I want to come before you and ask you first, because I guess the tree would have to be planted before the reunion. The reunion is planned for October 14th at Hill Palazzo's. We have 70 people coming already from our class.
That's great.
But, you know, I figured I would come before you first and ask you, and maybe you can get back to us.
Love it. Would you be able to email, again, Mrs. Francisco, Dr. Fenaria, and myself? And then they'll go through the proper places? And in the email, you've quite the crew there. That's going to be some party, let me tell you.
They're coming from all we have, the farthest we have is from Washington State.
Yeah, that's awesome.
They're coming.
But so in the email, I would request that you be a specific. You are very specific already with @McApit with a plaque. If you have a place that you're thinking, and then they can discuss it, and then they will get back to you in an email. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. We were thinking basically, they said like a tree that would bloom.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Love that.
Something to remember them by, you know? We figured if we do it before the reunion, then we can take a picture